And we have a review of the Prince Hall District.
Good morning, city councilors, mayor, city manager. Do you want to go ahead? Okay, all right. I am Tanya Tully with Planning and Development. And I am here today, let me pull out the, here today to talk to you about the historic overlay districts and the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District. We're going to start by Bynum Walter is going to give, give you a brief overview about zoning overlay districts generally. Then I'll explain what a historic overlay district is, the regulatory piece, certificates of appropriateness, and then the broad nature of our various HODs. In each section, I'll talk about all of them generally and Prince Hall specifically. And then I'll go into the designation process for Prince Hall and where we stand today.
Good morning, Bynum Walter, Planning and Development. I did want to offer some context about what is an overlay district? How does this zoning tool work? So this is a geographic tool that applies regulation to achieve a particular purpose in a defined particular area. And we have a couple of different kinds in our code. We have environmental overlays. Think about the Falls Watershed Protection Overlay District that limits impervious surface. We have one tied to the airport that limits building height and use because we know that the airport has environmental impact because of the flight patterns, makes a lot of noise. There's one for the, for Umstead Park to protect development around the park. We also have transportation overlays that relate to what we want development to look like around transportation investments that we have made. So for example, we have this special highway overlay district which limits development up adjacent to really big transportation corridors so that we have tree line corridors and not billboard line corridors. And so that we don't have development immediately adjacent to really noisy unpleasant corridors where people don't want to live. We also have a transit overlay district that is similarly setting goals for how we want regulation to happen around that investment, that capital investment in frequent, frequent transit service, frequent transit service. And then we have character overlays. Think about your neighborhood conservation district and also historic preservation. And then old school favorite, the special residential parking overlay district which limits front yard parking. So we have a whole suite of these things. They go over top of the mix of height, use, and frontage regulations that control individual parcels. So in, for example, the special highway overlay district, the base district there could be office mixed use, could be commercial mixed use, all kinds of things can happen in that area. And this is just like an extra, think about it like an extra layer of tracing paper all over the map that's saying, in addition to whatever rules you have already, here's this extra, extra set. So that's the context of overlays broadly in the city. And Tanya is going to dive deep on historic overlay and Prince Hall specifically.
Thank you, Bynum. So right now, we have eight historic overlay districts as indicated here. Because of how Raleigh developed and, you know, all of our very old properties are near the center, so currently all of our historic overlay districts are very near downtown. So as Bynum just talked about, you know, the zoning, the historic overlay district is a zoning overlay with historic overlay district being a collection of buildings, a group of buildings that collectively share and represent a particular history of a neighborhood. And the, the intent is to, you know, preserve this physical aspect of the history. And it uses the certificate of appropriateness process to do that. The regulatory authority that allows the city to have historic overlay districts and how to use the certificate of appropriateness process is given to the city by the state through state enabling legislation for historic preservation across the entire state. And just to give you a little bit of an example of the approximately 144 parcels within the city's planning jurisdiction, only about 1% are in historic overlay districts. So historic overlay districts are, you know, they help us understand, you know, where we came from, you know, how we can move forward. The intent is not to, you know, put a particular district, you know, under glass, you know, Raleigh is not Williamsburg. It's to balance the new and the old, to allow old places to have new uses and guide the, the changes so that there is a mix of old and new and, and still allow for the protection of the historic importance and identity of a neighborhood and its contribution to Raleigh. Now, historic overlay districts, regardless of the intent, it's a very personal, you know, personal process for property owners. And, you know, there are benefits and concerns and, you know, what, you know, depending on who you ask, you know, something that may be identified as a benefit, you know, it could be a pro or con depending on who you're talking to. COA, the COA process and being in NHOD is perceived both as flexible and constricting. You know, it's valuable and it's costly, it's useful and it's challenging. And that is, you know, part of the mix and why there's a lot of community engagement before even getting to city council and you making a decision because there's a lot that, that goes into it. The certificate of appropriateness isn't, yes ma'am?
Can I just ask one question on the prior slide? There was a mention of how these deter speculative demolition through the COA review.
Oh, I, oh, I can mention that. I was going to go a little bit later, but in, state law does not allow for the denial of demolition of properties. So if somebody applies for a certificate of appropriateness, RHDC can't say nope. I mean, to demolish a property, they can't do it. What it does allow for is a 365 day delay. So the idea behind that is that, you know, you're not, you're not going to have people that are going to come in, purchase a property just to tear it down and then wait and see if they want to do something financially. It is usually not, that's usually not the best way to do business. And so for a long time, that has worked really well and that, you know, the demolition applications that, that come in, you know, usually there is, there's already a plan in place. And so I don't have the stats with me today, but as a rule, if you look at the comparison of demolitions in other parts of the city, even the other historic districts that are no overlay, that are not overlays, you have less of them because of that.
Thank you.
So the certificate of appropriateness is an additional permit that property owners have to get prior to beginning work or applying for other permits. There are two time, two types of historic overlay districts that require the COA, street side and general. Their difference is in the amount of a property that is subject to the COA process. All of them except for Glenwood Brooklyn are general, meaning the entire property needs, is subject to the COA review. Glenwood Brooklyn, street side, it's only the portion that's visible from the street as defined in city code. It's not quite that simple. There are also two kinds of COA applications, minor and major, minor being administratively approved and major going to the Historic Development Commission for approval in a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. And I touched on this a little bit about, you know, navigating places. It, the COA process does this. It uses, you know, established design guidelines and Raleigh called the design guidelines for Raleigh historic districts and landmarks and then the very specific historic nature of the district. So what may get approved in Oakwood may not get approved in Prince Hall or may not get approved in Boylan Heights, et cetera. So it is very context based, very neighborhood and property specific. And this is where I was going to touch a little bit on the 365 day delay. There are a lot of things, it's exterior changes only that need a COA. Most of them are going to be administratively approved. I will note that in the street side HOD, we do not regulate pink color. But the things that, the projects that are going to the COA commission for the quasi judicial review is your new construction, your demolition, your additions, your large accessory structures, ADUs, garages, you know, not the little sheds and, and the like. In this slide, we're looking at the volume of HODs. This is from the stats pulled over the last five years, from August 2018 till right now. And really what it shows is that the difference is that roughly twice as many applications are administratively approved as those that are decided by the Historic Development Commission. And sort of a similar slide for looking at Prince Hall specifically, of course, there have been less, it's a smaller district. And, you know, same kind of thing. It looks like in Prince Hall that you had a, it's a slightly more even mix between those that have been administratively approved and those that have gone to the commission. I think that comes into play with the number of houses that have been relocated within the district as well as with the vacant parcels. There are a lot more opportunities for new construction than some of our more built out historic districts. And this map, looking at the historic overlay district and just to give you, get you oriented a little bit, you know, we've got Blunt Street here, Cabrera Street here, of course, you know, the Pope House, the Masonic Lodge is here and, you know, Shaw is, you know, down that way. And the stars here indicate where since designation since 2012, there have been COAs that have been decided in the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District. Of the 54 parcels indicated, most of them have had multiple applications. So it's roughly about half the parcels have had a COA of one kind or another. And of those, let's see, 132 applications, 70 approved, 74 were approved by staff, 57 were reviewed by the COA committee and 54 of those heard by the COA committee were approved. And I think of the 57, they were either denials or partial denials. And I think I mentioned some of this already, just since 2012, there have been 10 vacant parcels that have been infilled with new construction or relocated historic houses. And the timeframe for the, the range of buildings built in the district, not necessarily what's historic, is from 1875 to 2023. And I meant to mention earlier throughout the slideshow, there are pictures of properties within the historic district that have, you know, undergone some sort of rehabilitation or restoration since designation. Okay, now we're looking at all of the historic overlay districts in Raleigh. And the, the gray horizontal bars are representing the, you know, the historic timeframe of each district from like the first building or site feature. So for example, Capital Square, Moore Square, you know, the squares, 1792, all the way through the, when the last building within the historic time period would have been constructed. And, you know, most of them are in like the, the early 1900s. Additionally, there are some sort of broad categories of, you know, form or character. The orange or, you know, red bar are, are residential character neighborhoods, you know, mostly houses. The blue, Capital Square, Moore Square, that's our institutional and our commercial districts. And then the light orange or dark yellow, Prince Hall and O'Brone Village are two historic overlay districts that are specifically representing black heritage in Raleigh. I will note that again, I am speaking just to the historic overlay districts, not about all the multitudes of historic places that we have, which I know you know, but. And this slide is just really big example, just, just showing by parcel and by acreage, the size of the districts with Prince Hall being the smallest in terms of acreage, but around the middle in, you know, terms of the number of parcels. And Oakwood not only is our earliest, it is our, our largest district. Okay, and so this is the map of Prince Hall as it stands today. And to, you know, orient you again, here we have the Prince Hall Masonic Temple, we've got Tupper Memorial and, you know, the Pope House right here. And this is the, based off the map from designation, so the, the grayed out buildings are those that are considered contributing or historic. Those are the ones that were built during that development timeframe. The building footprints that are blank are what we consider non-contributing or nonhistoric buildings. That means either they were constructed after the period of significance with, so in the case of Prince Hall, after around, you know, 1955 or so. Or it's an older building that has been so altered, it's not recognizable to itself anymore. There are a lot of vacant parcels, you can, well, you probably can't see the little VL, but the blank ones, those are the vacant parcels. And then I've indicated the, the Raleigh historic landmarks, the black boundary are the current, indicates the current boundaries of the historic overlay district. So why Prince Hall from a historic standpoint? As I mentioned before, it's one of only two historic overlay districts related to black heritage. It tells the story of the voices and places that have been, you know, ignored or erased. And it, it, you know, it was the home to many prominent black doctors and other professionals. It's a mix of houses and businesses and churches and community landmarks that helped tell the story of black life in Raleigh from the late 19th century through the era, for the, through the beginning of the era of integration. And, you know, most of the buildings are residential in neighborhood in nature, although you do have particularly along Blunt Street, the you do have particularly along Blunt Street, the, the collection, a larger collection of the commercial buildings, and most of them, you know, aside from the, you know, Prince Hall Masonic Lodge, are small in scale. And then they show a progression of architectural styles, in part because of the, you know, fairly long timeframe of the era of importance for the district. So historic overlay districts are created ultimately through the regular rezoning process. But before you get to that point, there are some additional steps and requirements. You know, one of the requirements being the preparation of a historic designation report. There is also, it's not a requirement, but certainly a very good practice in the demonstrating, demonstration of property owner support. And there must be a recommendation from RHDC, from the Historic Development Commission, that the neighborhood, you know, has the importance to move forward. And there is a requirement that the report be sent to the State Historic Preservation Office, which is part of the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, to give them an opportunity to make an analysis and review. So in practice, these historic designation reports are prepared by architectural historians funded by the city in the historic preservation budget, and they've all thus far been city-initiated rezonings. And even though, you know, they have been city-initiated rezonings, there has been a preponderance of owner support prior to getting that, getting to that point. And then, of course, once the rezoning petition is filed, you go through the, the regular process of, you know, public hearings and neighborhood meetings and all of that. So, the designation of Prince Hall as an HOD began actually back in 2000. There was a city adopted redevelopment plan called the 500 Block of South Person/South Blunt area. And one of the pieces of that, in addition to the other parts talking about development generally and economic development, was a piece related to historic preservation and a recommendation that the historic overlay district be investigated. So in 2000, there was an initial draft of a historic overlay district designation report repaired, prepared, not repaired, prepared, and due to scarce resources, it, it was not finalized and it, it sat for quite a while. In 2009, the creation of a historic overlay district in the area was added to the 2030 comprehensive plan. And then where, you know, most everyone here today remembers is this came about, again, in 2011, when in cooperation with property district owners and former RHDC members Edna Rich Ballantyne and J.E. Williams, the RHDC began a community engagement process to gauge interest, to see if there was enough support from property owners to update the report and, you know, move forward with a potential rezoning application. So I won't go into all of what this is, there's more information in the, in the memo background, but what this illustrates, and this was a diagram included in the very last memo to City Council way back in 2012, is the upper portion are the, are the community meetings, the CAC meetings, the public meetings, and towards the right hand side, you know, Planning Commission, City Council meeting, and, you know, the various meetings and community engagement that happened over a year-long period. The lower portion is all, is correspondence, letters to property owners, postcards, and the like. So from January 2011 to February 2012, there were 13 public meetings and 11 mailings or letters. After this point, this was created in February 2012, there were two additional City Council meetings where it took two votes before it was designated. So ultimately, there was an effective day of, effective date of May 1st, 2012. So as part of the community engagement towards the end, and, you know, information that was gathered from the various meetings and the postcards and the mailings was a, you know, sort of a, a collection of the, the interest level of property owners. So on this map, and again, the, the properties circled in black are a couple of the landmarks, the Masonic Temple, Tupper Memorial and the Pope House. And the properties highlighted in green are those property owners who were in support of the historic overlay district. Those in yellow were neutral or a maybe. Red or pink are those property owners that were against. The gray or lavender are, were either inconclusive or incomplete responses. The blue parcels were city-owned lots at the time. And so there were, there was direct conversations or feedback from 35 of the 60 unique property owners representing 70% of the parcels within the proposed boundaries. And again, this is from January 2012. Something that's happening now, that we do not have the results from yet, is that the city had, we have mailed surveys to property owners that are there today under the current, that are in the current boundaries, which actually, just right there. And to, you know, get some feedback on, you know, what their experience has been being in the historic overlay district, as well as, you know, a yes, no question. That survey will close August 27th, so we do not have that information yet for you today. Yes, ma'am?
For those back in 2011 when you did this, or 2012, those that said they didn't want or were against it, were there reasons given why they were against being part of the district?
I don't know specifically. I mean, I could hazard a guess. I mean, usually when, you know, the typical reason why people do not want to be in a historic overlay district is that they don't want that additional regulation, you know, the Certificate of Appropriateness, you know, it's one more city process telling them what to do.
Thank you.
Yes.
So since this was started in 2000, how much of the people who lived there during that original time period are still, do you know?
I don't know yet, but that is going to be part of the analysis that will come with the survey results. We, one of the questions we asked is when you purchased the, you know, property, did you know you, or was it before you were, you know, did you buy it before, after it was in a historic overlay district and didn't you know? And we can also look at purchase, you know, the, the real estate data as well to figure that out.
Can we also, because you're showing, there's a vacant lot that you're showing on the map that I know there's a house on?
Okay, this, okay, so, this map is, does not update what has been constructed since 2012.
Okay.
So you are correct, and I can actually point some of those out right now. And actually, I do want to highlight this green parcel, that is the open rezoning case that will be before you in public hearing on September 5th. Over here, September 5th is the public hearing for the, this rezoning parcel, 423 South Blunt Street. And over here on the right, there are two, still two vacant parcels, but there are three houses that have been moved there, one on the corner, and these two have houses there. The houses that were down here were moved over here. There is new construction underway here, and, oh. Is that the one you're referring to?
It wasn't, but.
I feel like there's a house there too.
Yeah, I think there's a house there as well.
I think there's a house there too.
Yeah.
So, anyway, we'll work on that map. What this, what this map is showing are, you know, the parcels that have come out of the historic overlay district, you know, since designation, and which is part of why, you know, we're here today. And that is, you know, so the first ones came out in 2015 in the yellow or light orange, the orange or red, those are the ones most recently, the Shaw Assemblage parcels. And then the ones in blue over towards the east were removed from the historic overlay district last year. So as part, you know, as I mentioned before, part of the designation process is that reports are sent to the State Historic Preservation Office for review. The same thing happens if they're in the reverse, if there's a boundary change or parcels are coming out of historic overlay district. So in the rezoning, for the rezoning for 423 South Blunt Street, Z 20, you can read it, Z 7222, in that letter, the, the state addressed that parcel particularly, which is right there, but also spoke to their, you know, their concern over the piecemeal removal of parcels from the historic overlay district. And in that letter, they included some suggestions and this map with the, the dark blue line being the boundaries of the, of the district as they are now, and then highlighted in a darker, the darker green, lighter green, their suggested boundary, which, you know, that is their suggestion. And then, you can't really see it, but there's a light dash line showing the 2021 HOD boundary.
Question.
Yes.
So, I noticed the state suggested a smaller boundary. Did they state why?
They did, the, they, they mentioned a couple of things. One is the removal of vacant parcels, and they also have a, they express concern over the buildings there, which while older and historic buildings, were moved to that location. And there does, there is, well, there's a difference, there's a difference of opinion sometimes locally between whether buildings that have been relocated are still considered historic versus the State Historic Preservation Office, and particularly if, when you're looking at national registered designations, like historically, no pun intended, you know, that's frowned upon. In, in Raleigh, we move buildings a lot.
Maybe you're going to get to this, but could you tell us, you know, what are some of the form regulations and aesthetics and, you know, what are the kind of guidelines, you know, for, I guess, what these buildings are supposed to be like?
Yeah, I, I was not going to go into that level, but I can absolutely do that. So with the Certificate of Appropriateness process, when, when you're looking at, like, do you want me to speak to like new construction and additions, or changes to existing buildings, or both?
Both.
Both, okay. So when we're looking at changes to existing buildings, to begin with first, there is never a proactive requirement that you have to do anything. The process only comes into play is if you're making changes. You don't talk to us if you're just doing general repairs, you know, you're, you know, you've got some rotten boards here and there, you're doing your general upkeep and maintenance. Where changes to historic buildings come into play, they're looked at in terms of what is compatible with the district and what, you know, if, is specifically for that, a particular building. So for example, if we're looking at, you know, front doors, so what you've got on there is either all rotted out, or you've got a, you know, 1920s bungalow with a 1970s door on it. So you want to get rid of that and put something else in. We're just going to look at, you know, what's, what's a door that's going to be appropriate from the 1920s? You don't have to match, figure out what used to be there, but, you know, what's appropriate from the 1920s? If it's a simple house, it should be a more simple door. If you've got a high style house, then a fancier door is appropriate. That's kind of loosely the way it looks. And although we do review from all the way around the building, there is a concept of what is sort of a, you know, a primary facade. So what changes made to the front of the building or the sides of the building are looked at a little bit more tightly than what's happening on the rear. So on the rear, put your deck in, take out a window, put in a screen door, you know, add a deck, add a, you know, add a screen porch, all of that, you know, you have to go through the process, but regularly approved, I think the, and then, so when you're looking at other changes, the philosophy is repair, if you have to replace, only replace what is necessary. And then if you do have to replace, you know, entirety of a thing, then go back with what, you know, probably would have been there before. And that's where staff provides guidance, that's where the design guidelines also provide guidance. And particularly in Prince Hall, because there are various, you know, you've got very, you've got simple shotgun houses all the way up to, you know, that, that lovely pyramidal house we saw a few slides back. And there are some, you know, houses from the 20s or from the 1800s that are now historically have brick over them. It's hard to say, like, what the whole aesthetic is, because it really is based on that particular character. And the same thing comes into play when we're looking at new construction as well. But there is not a, what I refer to, a requirement to be matchy-matchy. There is flexibility in terms of building something new or building an addition that, you know, at first glance, looks like it could have been constructed during, you know, the historic development timeframe. Or it could be something that's a little more contemporary in nature. A good example in Prince Hall are the townhomes at the tenant South Person. Those went through the Certificate of Appropriateness process when they got constructed. And there's a, a house that I showed you a few slides back that looks like it might be a fire station or a commercial building, but it's going to be somebody's home. But, you know, it fits within the district. Does that?
That helps. And in terms of new construction or moving buildings, I mean, like the buildings that were moved, what era were they from?
Well, the, the ones here that were moved were originally in the historic district, so they went from, they were, I want to say they were from the, like, late 1800s, early 1900s, if I recall correctly. I don't remember the exact dates. The other one that was on, I lost it, oh. Feature unavailable, okay. I don't know what I just said. Okay, fine, I'll stop. On that corner over there where I can't draw the end of that street, was another one from around 1910 or so that was across town in the former 4th Ward that got relocated here. So typically for a building to be approved, to be relocated to a historic overlay district, it will have, need to have been built during the same timeframe as the historic district it's landing in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then the, the last thing I was going to, going to mention is, you know, what's happening now. The Raleigh Historic Development Commission has created an ad hoc committee on the Prince Hall, HOD. That committee has had three meetings, with the last one this past Thursday, which was a listening session with the, the survey mailing that went out. We invited property owners to that, to that committee meeting. The, the committee will be taking the information that they hear, both from the various meetings they've, they've had, as well as from the survey, you know, going to the full commission, they'll be, and they'll, you know, make some comeback in the future, fall, early winter, with some recommendation, early winter, with some recommendations to City Council. And then, as I said earlier, we'll be making an analysis of the information received from the survey that we will then submit to City Council as part of a manager's update. And I am open to any more questions. And I am open to any more questions.
How many owners attended the meeting?
There were six owners that, it was six owners and about four other people that were not property owners, at least one who had grown up in the district but is not a property owner now.
As far as community engagement is concerned, you mentioned the survey and this meeting, which sounds like it wasn't really well-attended. Have we considered doing door-knocking, going where people are? When's our community engagement van get here? Is that in the way?
Yes, but we have a temporary one out in the parking lot.
So that's certainly a possibility. So one thing we did learn at, at last week's meeting is that there are some property owners that are infirm, they aren't able to come out. And so we've printed off the, it's an online survey, but we have printed it off, and either, you know, some other people in the neighborhood, or if need be, staff, we're going to go to them and make sure that they have an opportunity to fill out the survey. So that is certainly a possibility, depending on the feedback we get.
I want to see a more robust, innovative engagement process. Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you so much. I just have a question on if, since we're doing the survey for Prince Hall, is that, I know it's something we asked you to do, so I'm wondering, do we do that with all Historic Overlay districts? Do they all have, like, a check-in to be like, all right, Oberlin or Glenwood South, do you still want to be in the district, or is this the only one that we're?
This is highly unusual.
Okay.
But we also haven't seen districts, you know, this many rezonings, in fact, okay, I'd have to go back and look, this is the only district that I can think of where we've had rezonings where parcels have come out.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Patton?
Thanks, I have a couple. Thank you for your time. Thanks for being here. So how much, how much property owner turnover was a question that mine, of mine, so it sounds like we need to wait on the survey results. I was curious if you could speak to the kind of, like, time and financial investments that a property owner might have to make if they are going through the Certificate of Appropriateness process specifically for new development?
So, that's a really good question. I don't know, I can't really speak to how much the additional cost is, other than there is, there's definitely an additional timeframe for new construction. It adds on, you know, approximately two to four months. From a materials standpoint, it is a little bit different than regular new construction, but not a whole lot there. For new, for detached new construction, both accessory buildings and primary buildings, what we consider, you know, nonhistoric materials such as, you know, fiber cement siding, you know, aluminum clad windows, you know, tip, you know, materials you typically see in new construction anywhere, it is allowed in the Historic Overlay Districts. There is certainly, I would say, a, a different level of review, like, some of the things they may need to know a little bit more upfront than they normally would in the design process. So when you come, you know, when you come to, when you file a COA for new construction, you need to not be where you're ready to pull permits, but it needs to be beyond just a, this is what I think I want to do. We typically refer to it as, you know, you know, sort of high-level divine, design development. You have an idea of where the window's going to go, what's the style going to be, what's the form going to be. And you can give an idea of materials, but there's not an expectation initially that you know exactly what your materials are going to be. And then after approval, then there is, you know, an additional review period where staff will review the details, some of which have to be determined prior to they, prior to them filing for their building permit, and some of it can come later. So in terms of extra cost in new construction, I would say it is more time than materials.
Okay, got it. And so would, and would you say, in your estimation, that a person, a property owner building new construction would need to employ any sort of special subject matter expert they might not, they would if they were building outside of a district?
So there's not, it's not, it is not required, it is definitely encouraged because it reduces the time. So some, an architect, or a designer, or a design-build firm that has worked in historic districts, whether in Raleigh or somewhere else, is going to have a better familiarity with the process, and they're going to be less likely for there to be, you know, changes made along the way. And so there, there's a fine balance between, you know, just hiring someone, you know, finding a stock, you know, house, and then paying somebody to modify it versus hiring somebody to help you throughout the process. So not required, it is encouraged because it saves time.
Got it, understood. Okay.
My last question. What's the difference between the historic designation and the overlay, and being in the overlay?
When we're talking about historic overlays, they're one and the same. However, there are, in addition to historic, the local Historic Overlay Districts, there are many more districts in Raleigh that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places. And in some cases, such as in Prince Hall, there's an overlap. So, and same with Oakwood. So you will have properties that are, you know, in the Historic Overlay District and designated historic that way, but also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. And the National Register of Historic Places does not come with any additional regulatory piece. There's the, you know, you can get into regulatory if you choose to participate in the rehabilitation tax credit program, if eligible.
But isn't there a local designation?
Uh-uh.
Because I'm trying to remember the houses over by St. Aug.
Oh, okay. There are also Raleigh Historic Landmarks.
Okay.
And those are individually designated properties that are significant in their own right, not, you know, necessarily part of a collection. And for those, they are also subject to the COA review process. And in the College Park, Idlewild area, we ended up doing some individual designations there, because early on, it was determined that there wasn't enough there for there to be a district, even at the National Register level. So that's the difference. And again, sometimes you have both and.
Councilmember Black?
So the survey is going to break down renters versus homeowners as present in the Prince Hall District.
We are going to do the best we can to ascertain that. So that, that is one of the, so one of the questions was, did you buy it? No, it was like, did you know you were in a Historic Overlay District when you purchased the property? And then, with one of the questions being, I bought it before designation. So we will have that all spelled out.
That actually gets into my next question, because with the people that may have bought these homes after 2009, what is the process of letting people know, like, in the home-buying process, if they're moving into a historic district with, like, certain rules or regulations around builds? Because personally, I don't feel like people go to a burger shop and buy a burger and then be like, oh, I want a chicken sandwich. So, like, you're coming in, I would assume that people moving there after a certain period of time would know that these neighborhoods are historic.
So most of the time they do, but it is definitely not a perfect process. So legally, if the purchase is by a Realtor, they're supposed to let them know that they're in a district, but that doesn't mean they're, they know what that means. That is something we're continually working on, is doing what we can to reach out to the property owners to remind them, hey, you're in a district.
And there's like nothing, there's like no regulatory, like, not regulatory, but like, like requirements to let people know, like, what the, what the requirements are around moving into districts from Raleigh?
There's not, I'm not sure. The short answer is no, there is not.
Okay, that's all. I was just wondering.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's a, it's a good question. It would certainly make life easier for property owners and staff if, you know, everybody knew going into it.
Councilmember Patton?
More for me, thank you. Does, maybe you already said this, does the HOD regulate uses just appearance?
Yep. Historic Overlay District does not regulate uses. In addition to sort of the exterior piece of it, sort of, the, as far as changes made to the building or new construction, it also does regulate setbacks and height. So if there is a difference between the underlying setback, then as long as, you know, it gets a COA, you know, basically, then you don't have to go through, get a variance through a board of adjustment, if you're going into what is the underlying setbacks. That is largely due to the fact that many of our historic districts where the buildings sit already are over the underlying setbacks. So it just, it essentially automatically legalizes them.
Got it, okay. And then, when our HDC comes back to us with recommendations, and I know we can't know what the recommendations will be until the survey closes, and then they make those recommendations, but broadly speaking, the categories of those recommendations might be to consider redrawing the boundary in accordance with what SHIBO sent, what other kind of, like, broad categories of recommendations might come?
Yeah, I mean, the broad category could be, you know, redraw the boundaries based on the SHIBO's guidance. It could be if there is, you know, like, a clear, you know, concentration of property owners in a certain area that definitely don't want to be in it, they could potentially consider redrawing the boundaries around that. There's also the possibility of looking at, instead of it being a Historic Overlay general, switching it to be a street-side Historic Overlay District. It's not a question we ask people, so if they started going down that path, we'd want to do engagement in that regard to see if anybody's even interested in that. So because the, I feel confident in saying that the goal will be to find a way to keep a Historic Overlay District. That's the mission of the commission. And unless there's this, you know, complete, it depends on what the, the survey response is.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. That was our only item today. So with that, we will adjourn, and we'll be back here at 1 o'clock for the start of our meeting. Thank you.